Time to call the meeting to order. Adam, would you call roll call, please?
Counselperson McGinty.
Here.
Counselperson Brenney.
Here.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Here.
Counselperson Bruning.
Here.
Thank you. Item number two, conflict of interest. Do any of the council people have any conflict of interest on anything on the agenda tonight?
No.
Okay. I just want to make note that item number four, public hearing, we'll go ahead and have the public hearing on that, but we will not pass any resolution tonight because Adam's informed me that he's not ready to do that.
We don't have final numbers yet.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to item number three, consent agenda. A, approval of agenda. B, approval of the minutes of the November 10th, 2015 council meeting. C, consideration of appointing Kim Adams, Chris Voss, Curtis Blaze, Steve Gary, Brandy Ripley, and Stacy Belkock to the Sac City Recreational Trail Committee. D, receipts and disbursements. Do you have any discussion or questions around the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve consent agenda.
Second.
No, it's okay. It's A, B, C, and D.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve consent agenda A through D. Are there any additional questions or comments?
So, the seventh person for the recreational trail committee has to be a woman that's in city limits, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
I would really, I'm very interested in that, so I don't know if they, they'll have to appoint me if they want me, but I would serve on it.
Yeah.
Okay. And if they don't, that's fine, but I'm just telling you that I would be happy to do that. Okay, so we call for a vote?
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson Bruning.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number four, now is the time and the place for the public hearing to establish an interim financing lease agreement. Have you had any calls or any written?
No, I have not.
Okay. Is there any discussion here tonight?
This is for the new lease track.
This would be a lease-to-buy with a $1 buyout option, yes. It's what we've been doing with our vehicles the last few times.
We have to make a motion to open the public hearing?
To close it.
To close it, okay.
Yes.
Did we open it?
Yes.
Yes, we did. Okay. All right, is there any further discussion?
Nope.
See, it's not that hard. Okay, take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motions, I'll make the difficult motion. To close the public hearing.
Did someone second that?
Yes.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Bruning.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
Item number five, then, we'll move on to projects. A, Sac City Airport Runway 1836 Rehab Project, number one. Consideration of approving the engineering agreement with Olson Associates Incorporated.
This is the 2016 airport project. It includes some repair work to the runways, some repainting of the runway as well. This, I would recommend that this be approved contingent upon final acceptance by the FAA.
And has, is there any prob, is this a pretty standard consultant agreement?
Correct, yes.
But the FAA has not looked at it yet.
The FAA hasn't given their bless, final blessing to it yet. So until they give their final blessing, in fact, their recommendation is the same, that you approve it contingent upon their approval, their acceptance.
Can I just ask, if it's not approved or accepted, why is it on the agenda already?
This way, they can start the process as soon as possible. It's a 95% assurance they will approve it. They had seen it prior to this process, but they had not signed off on it yet. And in order for the bidding process to begin within the timeline of when the airport commission wants the bidding process to begin, they would like to not have to wait for the following council meeting from that step, they'd like to go ahead and have it in the books.
Okay.
Would it make a difference if we didn't approve it as far as what the FAA's feelings would be on it? I think this would show that it's something that we want to have done, because if we voted down, they're going to say, "Well, they're probably not interested, so we may not get the money."
Yeah.
I just wonder, you know, it's kind of unusual to approve it before it's actually.
I would move passage of the Airport Runway 1836 Rehab Agreement with Olson Associates pending approval of the FAA.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the engineering agreement with Olson Associates pending the final acceptance by the FAA. Is there any additional questions or discussion or anything? If not, we'll call for a vote.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson Bruning.
Yes.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number six is citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. Are there any tonight? If not, we will move on to seven miscellaneous. Larry Gosh is to address the council on possibly adding a stop sign at Dunkum and North 15th Street. Larry?
Yes. I think we should have a stop sign there, because it's a gravel road, and people drive 90 miles an hour if you want to know for sure. They go, they got two blocks of nothing but gravel, and they go through that stop sign, and they don't look to see if something's coming from the north or the south, and I think we're going to have a collision there. And there's lots of people walk their dogs up and down that street, and somebody's going to get hurt that way, too. Now, I've had, I've had people run me off the road with my motorcycle. I run right up in the yard, because they're coming so fast they can't stop. And then you look at it this way, if there, there's a collision there, somebody gets hurt or killed, it's just like out on the gravel road down the country. Gravel road crossing that main highway. Somebody's going to sue, somebody's going to come up with a suit that's going to try to sue the city, because there isn't a stop sign. But if there is one, the city is not to blame, the people running the stop sign is to blame. That's the way I look at it. Now, you do as you will, but I think it's a good deal to have a stop sign put there.
You're talking about, then, the west?
Eastern west.
There is a stop sign.
No, there is not.
I just drove by there, there was a stop.
I live on that corner, I've lived there for three years, there is no stop sign.
North 15th and Dunkum.
Dunkum.
Is it?
There is no stop sign there. There is one way over west on the highway, on the 16th Street. The one going by the 15th Street is not, no hi, no stop signs there at all.
Okay.
You have any?
There is, I discussed it with Chief Thompson earlier today, and we don't have a problem with putting a stop sign on the gravel road of 50th and Dunkum. We don't, a three-way stop sign was mentioned, we don't believe there's enough traffic to justify that, but we don't have a problem with a stop sign getting put.
I figure if you put a stop sign there, they, people probably won't stop at it anyway, because they don't stop at stop signs. I've seen it time and time again. But if they, if there is one there, people are going to stop and think, is there somebody coming from the north or the south that's going to get hit? Or is there a policeman up there on the hill that's going to catch them? They're going to think about that, because there's a stop sign there. If there ain't no stop sign there, they'll just go right on through just like nothing.
Is there a record of any incidents at that location, do you know, Mark?
I have, Chief Thompson, like I said, he discussed, he didn't, I don't think he looked up that information, but I've been here.
Well, you're our longest serving.
Yep, I've been here 26 years, and no, I don't recall very many accidents on North 15th Street, period. But like I said, since there's one on 16th Street, I don't see a problem with wanting it to be on 15th Street.
Is there an advantage or disadvantage to a yield sign?
A yield sign would probably work also for that, because it's not a high traffic. 16th Street by far has a lot more traffic than 15th Street does. So either one, I think, would be.
You live there, you'll find out there's a lot of traffic going down that road.
Do people speed through there?
Yes. I've seen, I've seen people come from the south and they go north.
16th Street has a lot more speed, just because of ET traffic.
There's a razor in the road where the railroad track used to be. I've seen people go so hard, there, there was daylight between their tires and the road, that's how fast they go. And that scares the crap out of me.
My recommendation to the council would be to put this in the hands of myself and Chief Thompson, and potentially, anything you would do needs to be done in the version of an ordinance, so we can take this in and look at the prospects of a yield sign and a stop sign.
You can do what you want to.
And potentially draft an ordinance related to that.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And one other thing that I will do, we'll have to wait till spring and summertime, we'll go ahead and put our speed trailer through there.
Yeah, it'd probably help.
Yeah, well, we'll make a point to put it there, but we don't put it in the wintertime just because of the salt.
I can see that.
You know, but we will put it, we use it for spring.
There isn't as much traffic going through there in the wintertime as there are in summer, or they're still doing it, though.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing it to our attention, we appreciate it. Okay?
Thank you.
Long streets, definitely.
Seven miscellaneous, B, consideration of sale of city equipment.
In your packet, and it may be towards the end of your packet, because it was a late addition, there is a small amount of information presented for you for the purposes of selling two generators. These generators were put out of service by the city about three years ago as part of the sewer plant transition. These are diesel generators that were originally built in 1978. They were in working order three years ago when they were taken offline. However, we know at least one of them needs significant repairs in order to run again, the radiator, for instance. So I guess what I'm saying to you is, is that I don't think we should guarantee that either one of them operates. I suspect both would need some significant improvement in order to get back up to working order. You'll see in the packet, we've had some interest drawn about these. In fact, I've had two or three different individuals who have shared some interest with the idea of purchasing these. The only unique difference between the two units, for the most part, is the output. You'll see it's 75 kilowatts compared to 100 kilowatts. The R diesel version, 60-hertz on-end generators, both 1978 models. You'll see that hours are included on the front page. You'll see that the 75-kilowatt unit has 110 hours of usage, whereas the 100-kilowatt unit has had over 1,000 hours of usage on it. It was the main generator at the plant. The, in order for the city to keep them, they'd have to be permitted-use generators if they want to put on a transportation pallet of some kind. And I, initially, the water department had expressed interest, but since that time, they have no longer interested in obtaining these units. We were going to keep them internally, see if we couldn't fix them up, get them to run again. The feeling now is, is that there is no, there is no distinct interest internally to keep these. We did want to set some form of a minimum expectation to be fair to all bidders, not saying we would absolutely accept this, but I initially set the minimum bid at what the tonnage scrap weight would be if we weren't trying to sell these. I would expect that these units would bring in significantly more than that cost, but it would at least give us an idea if there is, how serious the interest in these units are, is. Sorry.
What would be the cost to get one of them working?
Sure. Rough idea, I think they're in the back, very back of your packet. The rough idea is that the one that needs the radiator to work on it would probably need somewhere between $300 to $500 to get it up and running. You know, you have to have the mechanical skills in order to do it. The other one, they figured it'd be more in the $300 to $400 range to get it up and running. So you're probably talking about $1,000 worth of outlay to get these units up to use. And the feeling was, is we just didn't have any internal interest for them.
When, I remember several years ago when there was a massive ice storm and things were, and they were, I know that there was an effort to try and get, like, the community center heated and online, I mean, so that there would be a place that people could go. Would one of these be serviceable for?
We now have a more modernized unit for that purpose. In fact, we went up to Minnesota in order to obtain it during that event. The, and it's actually the harness system that's been set up at the rec center is specifically designed for use with that unit.
Okay.
I will point out, and I can't stress this enough, one of the new rules that you have to follow now is, is these type of generators have to be permitted. And that means they have to be re-permitted on an annual basis, they have to be inspected. There's a cost with keeping them in the fleet. And right now, we have units to support all of our facilities, all of our pump stations, this building, and the rec center. Basically, the only facility within the city's fleet, and arguably, the rec center isn't in our fleet, it's just in our own vested community interests to be able to support. The only facility, we don't currently have the equipment to connect the power up and running, is the library. One of these units would probably not, I don't know that the use would justify keeping them and trying to keep them in working operation for the library.
As long as, I just wanted to make sure that we had some way to meet that need, if it were.
Sure. You know, during that event, we were able to keep all of the city facilities up. The only area where we got caught a little bit is, we had enough for all of our facilities, we didn't have something for the rec center. And that could operate the rec center, because there's quite a bit of, as Pato Barb and I really struggled when we were up there those nights, about having enough, even having enough electricity to provide support for. We also had difficulty during that evening, because when the unit got here, the harnessing wasn't the same. It was quite a chore, it was a Herculean task to keep electricity to there. But now we're ready for that, we have the equipment ready to use for those purposes.
Do you know one of these says, well, both of them say 100 kilowatt at the top, and one should say 75, right?
Uh.
The second page says 100, and the third page says 100, but then lower it says 75.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Might have to fix that before you.
Oh, sure.
Maybe it says 75.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you ready to move on? Adam?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Okay.
So we need a motion to allow this to happen?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the sale of the two generators that the city owns.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the sale of two generators. Are there any additional questions or comments?
Was that second, Dr. Brenney?
No, it was Bruce.
Bruce.
Sorry. Not used to this chore.
If not, call for a vote, please, Adam.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Counselperson Bruning.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number C, under seven, is introduction and first reading of ordinance number 2015-272, entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by Amending Provisions Pertaining to Chapter 18, City Clerk.
Within your packet, you'll see two different pieces or piles of paper. One is the proposed amendment, that's 272. The other one is just a copy of Chapter 18 as it reads now. If you turn to page three of Chapter 18, under 12 point, or 18.12, you'll see that there is item 2, 3, 4, and 5. What this ordinance would, the amendment to this ordinance would basically do is eliminate number 2, 3, 4, and 5. The state code was changed in the last year as far as the responsibilities associated with nomination petitions and candidacies for offices. That is now all housed under the county auditor's office. And so, to be consistent with state code, this action would update our ordinance pertaining to the city clerk's roles and functions.
Someone want to introduce that, please?
I would introduce the ordinance number 2015-272, entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by Amending Provisions Pertaining to Chapter 18, City Clerk.
Okay.
It's, the language in state code that is referenced, 36.4, has been changed, and all of that is now no longer found in state code as well.
So it's pretty cut and dry, there's no question about it.
It doesn't exist.
I need a motion, then?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to accept the ordinance 2015-272.
Actually, you have to pass the first reading.
For the first reading.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass the first reading of ordinance number 2015-272, the ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the City of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to Chapter 18, City Clerk. Are there any additional questions or comments?
Can I read the second and third? I'm going to recommend that.
I would probably recommend we do at least the second reading, only because Jim Dowling notified me this morning, he'd like to review it. And until we get his final response on his recommendations, I would hold out till at least the second reading, give him an opportunity. He just contacted me about 4 o'clock this afternoon to ask if he could review a copy. I think he just wants to make sure it's consistent, but we should give him that opportunity.
Okay. If there aren't any further questions, I'll call for a vote.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Bruning.
Yes.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
Thank you. We are on seven, D, consideration of resolution number 2015-23, resolution to fix a date for a public hearing on the possible vacation and sale of city property.
I was approached, a few years ago, the city transferred ownership, we sold the alley that is adjacent to Mr. Graybill's property on South 9th Street to him. That isolated, the greenhouse, as you come past the city, you know, the common area. That isolated some previous alley components that went on up west of there. And so, now Duane Lovell and Mr. Kits Miller have both approached me with interest in purchasing the piece of that alley that now sits on the other side of Mr. Graybill's property. It's now isolated, it doesn't have an endpoint access point, and they would like to purchase it. This and the next resolution would both be setting the public hearing date for the possible vacation and sale of those two adjacent alley components.
It's the one right at the top of 9th Street, right, to the right?
Yes.
Right by Swangers?
Yes.
Right by Q's.
Yeah, the greenhouse would be just north.
So that's his driveway is an alley?
Yes. It was. It was at one time, he has since purchased it. But it ends at his property line. So past his property line going west is an old alley that doesn't exist. And so, those two property owners have now expressed interest in.
Can't, you can't get to it from anywhere.
I was going to say, they wouldn't be able to use his driveway to get to it, right?
Not without an agreement with him.
They'd just add it on their yard, and it'll go right.
Right, backwards they're adding.
Probably already taken care of it.
And it puts it on a tax roll, and you might get all of $11 a year more.
And we don't have to maintain it or clean it.
Right.
Like we're doing now.
Yes.
So we fix the date for the next council meeting?
Correct.
Which is?
December 8th at 5:00 p.m.
Okay. We, I don't suppose we can do the two together, can we?
No, we need to set them both as separate.
I would move passage of resolution number 2015-23, to set a public hearing on the possible vacation and sale of city property, and have the hearing on December 8th at 5:00.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to set the public hearing for the possible sale of, a vacation of city property for December 8th at 5:00 p.m. Is there any other discussion? Would you call for a vote?
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson Bruning.
Yes.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
E is the consideration of resolution number 2015-24, a resolution to fix a date for a public hearing on a possible vacation and sale of city property for December 8th at 5:00 p.m.
I'll make that motion also for, number 2015-24, also to have that hearing set at, for December 8th.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution number 15-24, to fix a date for the public hearing on the possible vacation and sale of the city property for December 8th at 5:00 p.m. Anything else you want to discuss? I'll call for a vote, Adam.
Counselperson McGinty.
Yes.
Counselperson Perry.
Yes.
Counselperson Hanson.
Yes.
Counselperson Bruning.
Yes.
Counselperson Brenney.
Yes.
F is review and approval of goal-setting results.
Included in your packet was, and this will take you back a little bit, back in late April, we went to our, our goal-setting session with Mr. Schott, Jeff Schott from the University of Iowa. And at that time, he identified high, medium, and low priorities, but we, and we accepted and approved those high, medium, and low priorities. But we really didn't put any action items with them at that time. Hometown Pride was just starting up, and we wanted an opportunity for Hometown Pride to have kind of a chance to look at it and maybe add something to it involved in the process. In the last month, I've gotten that back from Hometown Pride, and so what you have here is a follow-up to that that would include some actionable items. There is much here for your discussion and possible addition and subtraction from, as they are for your approval process. The highest priority that was recognized was some street programs, of course, plans to do street projects to improve the state of our streets. The medium priorities that have been identified were the facility housing development programs. You'll see some action items under there. The establishing of a community group, which of course, Hometown Pride's kind of filled some of that gap. And then, the third one being, look and review plans for some updates to sidewalk plans. That would include both existing sidewalks and where potential sidewalks don't exist. Then, under low priorities, a road sign program, an improved city communications, promote youth involvement, and then, community pride and first impression of our community. You'll see some action items that are identified under each of those. I guess the thing I'm looking for the council for is, is there other action items they would like to see included, or would, at this time, if not?
That's a lot.
Well, you might remember, usually about once a year, I'll pull out the results of the 2010 and the 2012, and kind of give you where we are as far as an update on meeting those and what our action items were at that time and what we've done and haven't done. I think the idea behind it is, we've always kind of used this as a guideline on where we're spending money and how we're operating. What this would do is, of course, be the next set of what I'm giving you an annual review on, and what we've done, and how we've gone forward on approaching those possible goals.
You know, the low priorities, the street road sign program, I don't know that that's so low. There are streets in town where there are no signs.
Thank you, I was just going to bring that up.
I mean, I was looking for some the other day, and there are a couple of them that the, absolutely, the sign is totally gone.
Yeah, I'm not so sure that doesn't need to go either to higher or top of medium.
It wouldn't, I mean, I don't think it would be, I think there's some financial assistance with those type of things, and I don't think it would be a high, the highest dollar thing. You might want to look at seeing if you can.
Well, actually, you'd be surprised. The misnotion out there is that DOT gives grant money for these types of signs, they do not.
No.
They give signs for stop signs, yield signs, arrow signs, but they do not give signs for your street name signs. I've already gotten bid stuff back for the, because we've actually already been working on this issue. We've actually already got. Uh, we've actually already gotten bid stuff back, and to do all of town would be about forty-five thousand dollars. Remember, many of these signs are uniquely tooled up for the spelling of your city. They're not as if they're sitting there and they can just print them out. They are tooled specifically for, Gishwiler doesn't exist out there in their system.
Why do we have three spellings of it on the street signs?
It's probably cheaper that way.
Do you have to do them all at once?
Well...
I mean, you gotta start somewhere.
Well, Barb, what we want to know is, one, we want to know what it would cost. Now that we know what it would cost, we kind of know how our options of attacking it are. One of the approaches I was looking at is, is we would take the numerical, um, streets. Now, they do have those in their system. So we could start attacking numerical signs, and there are more common, of course, named sign out there. So those are typically cheaper than buying your actual name signs. So we could try to tackle most of the numerical signs in a one-year cycle. Now, where it gets more expensive is when you start moving into the, to the namesign. I was looking at about a two-year, maybe, depending on price, a three-year scenario of uploading all of the streets over that time period. Um, but of course, if we are able to find a granting opportunity that would pay partially for that, we could do that as well.
I think you could ask the, the foundation. Wouldn't that be something that, and are we going to utilize the logo that we paid money to get developed?
Well, they were, actually, I think we talked about this a, a couple of months ago. When we initially started out asking for a quote, we asked for a quote that included over the top our logo on top of it and using, um, the color coding, uh, for what we wanted. The color coding wasn't such a bad issue, but just the simple step of adding the logo on top significantly increased the cost of the item. And so, um, what I was planning to propose is that we would move forward with the color scheme for the branding, but not, maybe not put the logo themselves on it due to the increased cost.
I think that it ought to be proposed both ways so that there's a choice, because we spent money to work that all up and have a community effort to be a, you know, and I don't know. It's just my opinion.
Did you ever ask what the life is on them? Besides accidents.
Sure. Um, depending on what color you go with, and we're asking for a unique color. Um, typically, what happens is, is when you go with a unique color, they don't have the lifespan that they have with this, the traditional color.
Just because of fading or rot?
Yes. Now, the other thing is, if you go with a color like red, of course, they fade a lot faster than the others. What I was going with was a hue of blue that was consistent with our blue space plans.
What'd they say? Twenty years? Ten years?
They didn't. They, I actually honestly did not ask them what exactly a lifespan would be on it. Um, I know on a standard unit, they told me it would be in the neighborhood of twenty years. But they told me if I picked a red or a non-standard color, I could usually expect about half that. So I would have to say with, without asking specifically about that unique color, I would say ten years was roughly what they were telling me.
It would probably be cheaper to go with the standard color, even if it isn't conducive with our program, but have the logo. Is that an alternative?
You know, I didn't go that route. I didn't talk to them about that too as well.
I know. Just one thought I guess I have, you're talking about doing the numbered streets first. Then we're going to have all of, every street sign will have a new one and an old one. Would it be better to try and do a district, to do an area so, so we don't, I mean, if you have a new one that looks good and it's gonna make the other ones look even worse? If we would say, okay, we're going to do this area of town and do them all.
And particularly if you're going to a different color scheme, um, you'd have one up there would be blue and one up there would be green.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be an issue.
And plus, then you'd, I mean, in term, it's not a huge amount of labor to install them, but I mean, it would make more sense to replace them both at the same time than to go back, we're gonna, we're going to have to replace on every street, replace twice.
I guess I'd ask council members, I, on here it says, "Review and approval of goal-setting results." Let's go back to that. Um, are you in approval of these results? That's what you're supposed to do at this evening's meeting, so there'll be more discussion on the signs.
One other area, I guess I would like to see, under the street program, we have action item A, organize a street improvement project. I think probably we also need to have an implementation as well as organizing one. I mean...
Well, I mean, arguably, you can say an implementation for any of the items, Bruce. I think this is kind of the first step in each one of those action items.
I guess when I was looking at a thorough street project, if we could come up with, okay, here would be a ten-year, here would be a ten-year plan for streets or whatever, you know, whatever's there, but I think...
Okay, I get what you're saying.
I mean, I think you can organize the program without actually taking a, taking a step.
So you would like to add to that, um, organize a street improvement project, promoting a ten-year plan, or do you want to say implementing a ten-year plan?
I guess I would like, my, personally, I would like to see us, I mean, I think we need to organize or, or come up with a plan for the street projects or street improvement, but also I would, I think that we need to have more than a plan. I think we need to have, have an, another action step that actually has some concrete hitting the ground.
Maybe you don't even want organize on there. Organize means just to sit down and talk about it and get it organized, which, how, how better would you want to state it?
That, that needs to be a step, but I think, I think we need to have one of, um...
Develop and implement a ten-year plan?
Or a plan, at least.
Okay, develop and implement a plan?
I mean, I, I just think, I, I think we need another, another, another action step and...
Okay.
For develop and establish.
Develop and establish a plan.
Or as implement means actually doing.
Okay, is everybody in agreement to B would be develop and establish a plan? You want to add that?
Sure. I was, yeah. My personal, I still like to say something that actually is...
Timeline. You want a timeframe? Is that what you're?
Either a timeframe or that we have a goal of actually implementing some part of a street project.
With a goal of... Implementation beginning in two thousand sixteen?
I don't think we have to put a timeframe on it, but I mean, I think the goal...
You know that?
Okay.
I don't think there's anything wrong with it.
Develop and establish a plan.
Say, establish, you know, to be developed in two thousand sixteen. Might as well start talking about it soon.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, it's the highest priority. I think we need to do something that has a little bit of more than organize, let's organize a plan for it.
Okay. Are you good with all the rest of it?
So what, what do we do with the street signs?
I want the street road sign moved up. I want it under medium. I think it needs to be addressed sooner than later.
Okay. Everybody in agreement with that?
And along with it, not just the signs, but so many of the poles are rusted and unmade, repaired. Be a good volunteer project. You know, that's, that's not, that's a minor thing to go and paint them. That could be done separately from the actual street sign.
Including poles or posts or whatever you call them.
Okay.
Anything else you want to change or switch?
Well, we've appointed a, a task force on the trail. Uh, so if we have a task force on it that's been established, uh, shouldn't that be part of our goals as well?
Maybe put that where the street sign was and move the street sign up.
Don't we have a street committee? It's the street.
But he wants to put in the, the trail thing where the street sign was. You want to say promote recreational trail, or how do you want to say it? That would be one on the bottom priority there. Help.
Explore possibilities for recreational trail?
What did you say?
Explore possibilities for recreational tra- trail, parentheses, S.
Okay, that would be number one under low priorities. Is that where you want me to put it?
Just somewhere under there.
I just replaced the street sign one with that. Okay, is there anything else you want to pay attention to?
And it is a, I know it's a, a low priority, but the property maintenance and property, derelict property, I think, kind of judging by where, where we have been acting as a council and where the P and Z has been, that's probably above our bottom priority.
I think so, true.
But I mean, I'm, I don't know if these are necessarily ordered among the high, medium, and lows, but, um...
It's on there.
I, I think it says something, though, that if, you know, we've been talking about encouraging the P and Z and the council, we've put money aside for it. We've been working on the sun wise thing. It just says something if we have it under the very last lowest priority, number four, which is the last one, and B, the very last thing on the page. I think it just says something about how dedicated we really are to that.
What if we move it to number two of high priorities? Because it's been a high priority for quite some time.
I, I would agree with that.
Would that be okay with everybody?
So take number four on low priorities and put it as number two on high priorities?
And indicate to P and Z that we have done that.
Yeah. So then we have two high priorities. We have four medium priorities, and then we have three low priorities.
Right.
Sounds reasonable.
And I don't even know if you should call them low priority, because if they're a priority, I mean, it's kind of like...
They're all gonna be considered as, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the high, medium, and low is probably the, I...
Yeah. Normally, you'd have, like, priorities, and you'd list them in the order, and you wouldn't necessarily call them high, medium, or low, but, okay, is everybody okay with that?
One of these classifications came from was based on the results.
Right. Yep, I understand.
I think that's Jeff Schott's line there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's how many people voted on all ten of the people that were there. Okay, so, um, fifteen. All right, go ahead.
I would move adoption of the two thousand fifteen goal-setting sessions and, as we have discussed, an amendment.
Okay.
I'll second it.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the, the goal-setting, um, as amended in this discussion. Are there additional questions? Would you call for a vote?
Councilperson McGinty. Councilperson Brenney.
Yes.
Councilperson Hanson.
Yes.
Councilperson Bruning.
Yes.
Councilperson Perry.
Yes.
Okay.
Consideration of opening internally for wastewater superintendent. We have somebody retiring, so, um, it's time to think about hiring somebody in this.
And we already do that?
And we always open internally before we open externally.
Well, we fill the position for the purposes of having an operator. We have not filled the supervisor position. Um, in other words, we filled a position, but we have not identified yet whose license we operate under, uh, who is the superintendent.
Okay. So we need a motion to open the internal.
I'll make a motion that we open internal for a wastewater superintendent.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to open internally for a wastewater superintendent. Is there any other discussion? Call for a vote, please.
Uh, councilperson Brenney.
Yes.
Councilperson Perry.
Yes.
Councilperson Hanson.
Yes.
Councilperson McGinty.
Yes.
Councilperson Bruning.
Yes.
Okay.
H is discussion of future board appointments. There's a list in your packet.
Uh, the highlighted, I, locations, of course, are identified as open. Those are the positions where the current occupant has identified for us that they do not plan on taking reappointment at the end of the year, um, due to some, uh, gender rules. A handful of those positions have to be, are dictated as either being male or female. There's a couple that can be either, uh, either or. Um, this, of course, does not include the openings associated with the Trail Commission. The Trail Commission was in the process of being established. Um, but of course, we would also have an opening there that we'd want to be filling pretty soon.
Do you, um, do you need a male on the Fine Arts Council? If you do not, if you could use a woman, I would volunteer as...
Actually, we can take one of both. We can take both a man and a, um, and a woman.
I would volunteer to serve on that committee.
Which one is that?
Fine Arts Council.
We need one woman and one...
I think it's one woman and then one open.
Yeah.
It can be either one. Uh, we also have spots on the Historic Preservation Committee, um, the Planning and Zoning Committee, and the Board of Adjustment, and I believe the one position currently open on the Trails, Rec Trails Committee.
And then we need to appoint at some point a council liaison to the Trails.
Correct.
The Recreation Trail Committee.
And, and my intent was, is doing, eh, when we get to the council forum, I'll talk a little bit about that, because there is something in your packet kind of pertaining to that issue.
Where will the new person be displaced, the new councilperson?
Um, I'll, if you don't mind, I'll wait till we get to the council forum and I'll discuss that.
All right. Is there any further discussion on this?
If, I'll be seeking, um, people to fill these positions. Uh, Fine Arts Council, Board of Adjustment, Historic Preservation, Planning and Zoning. I'll be looking for people interested in serving on those boards. Sure.
Uh, committee and department head reports. They're in the packet. Okay, move on to eight council forum.
Yeah. Okay, in your packet tonight, and I'll, she stapled them together, so, um, you may not catch it. Um, you'll see the projects list on top. If you'll pick the projects list off and look at what's underneath it. It's time for the city council to begin the process of the board appoint, their liaison and board appointments for the two thousand sixteen seventeen, uh, season. The, um, there's actually two on each of one of these. It was just easier to go ahead and print the whole one, but you only have to fill out one side of it. Uh, you'll see I tried to identify the difference between voting and non-voting boards, the ones that are internal committee appointments. I also tried to point out how many of you would be appointed to serve on each one of those different boards. You'll see included in there, as we, I was putting off the discussion a little bit, of Trails. If you look under committee appointments, about two-thirds of the way down, you'll see Trails included in there, as an appointment as a committee, internal committee. Um, and then, uh, that would probably be upgraded to a non-voting board appointment, to be all honest. But it's on there, if you're interested in taking part in it. Um...
Is there any other discussion?
Uh, other than the County League meeting is December tenth in...
Cattlemen's, isn't it?
Yes.
Early was having at Cattlemen's.
Uh, I, I personally won't be there. That is the exact same night as the Northwest Iowa December meeting in Everly. So, yeah, so I'll be at the meeting in Everly. Um, so, uh, if someone wants to make arrangements for our, our basket, uh, wants to help me with arrangements for the basket for that evening, I'd really appreciate... for the basket for that evening, I'd really appreciate it, since I can't be in two places at once.
I can do that. Do I get donations or do?
Yeah, we'll talk about it. I'll give you a call.
Okay. Okay, so then, if that's it, we move to adjourn. So who would like to do?
Some of.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson McGinty. Counselperson Brenney. Counselperson Hanson.